I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as one.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the elementary building. I want to thank the elementary principal for hosting us. Thank you indeed.
We'd like to come here.
It's very pleasant. It looks a lot different than it used to. So, okay, well, let's start. We did the slide. Let's approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
The agenda is to name an entertaining motion to the regular board meeting agenda, February 17, 2017.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you.
Secondary entertaining motion to the regular board meeting minutes for the meeting held on February 7, 2017.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just read through. I was going to add a couple of questions on part three. Let me just mention a couple of things that slipped out. I just answered some clarification from campus with regards to result in labor in the cost escalation. Answered some clarification on the repurposing of the spaces and the money that was allotted for state. And I just made a note, a mention of, probably continue to go back to projects in the beginning.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Student.
They're not here today.
Students aren't here. So we'll go right into the presentation on the theme.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And I know my name is the one on the agenda, but I definitely brought in some key players to help with this presentation tonight. I really wanted, we're going to do a theme update for you to hear directly from teachers that are doing it. And we do have students who are in some of these positions. So in a minute, I'm going to pass the remote over to Ashley Burks, who's going to be talking about some of our theme projects that we're working on in elementary school. Now a new teacher to the district, but she's new in this position this year. Sean Sporleader also is going to be here for the presentation. He's going to talk about our middle school and high school technology offering. Rob Antonucci was going to be a part of it to talk about the art offerings that we have currently, but Thursday night is actually when he's teaching in class at RIT, but he did send a little video, but I think it's a good little snapshot that says, now what we're doing now with our theme program, but also where we want to move ahead to. So to talk about theme in elementary school, Ashley, if you want to come in and just talk about the basic with the rotation, you know, what offerings the kids are getting now and kind of summarize those pieces. Thanks, Ashley.
Sure. So I'm Ashley Burks. I was a second and fourth grade teacher for 14 years, and then I took this position this year. It was a long time ago. They gifted the tenth position, and then it became enrichment, and now we're turning it more into theme. So this, in the theme afternoon, students have art every four days with Mr. Wedge, and then they have enrichment with me, which includes technology and engineering, or library with Elizabeth West every other week. So once every eight days with me, once every eight days with her. That's for, for me, kindergarten through third grade students, where since this, so it is on the schedule this year, but we're looking to change that in the future, so they get a little more time as well. So here's what we've been doing this year. In kindergarten through second grade, we've been focusing a lot on engineering, building creativity and flexible thinking, productive struggle, those kinds of skills. We use a lot of different materials for that. The upper primary students, end of first to into second, get a little introduction to digital citizenship, little introduction into coding, and a little bit into typing and keyboarding, because we want them to be familiar with the devices that they have, but not innovate on the screens any more than they need to be. At three through five, the bigger focus is on digital citizenship fluency and keyboarding. Coding is sort of working through their own cases according to their own interests. And then we moved from there. We just started into more robotics. So I have four different sort of robotic programs that we've used that we're trying in different ways in the whole classes. And then kids can work with me also in small groups to extend and enrich those programs that they're more interested in or more, you know, has more aptitude for. And then they go to sixth grade, and they get shots.
And you can see in that little snapshot that we have in there, Ashley has the kids using a tiny bit of real estate right on the other side of that wall, our old Mac lab, and really capitalizes on what real estate that is. I remember a couple of weeks ago, it was the day before, we had the snow day, and all the kids were kind of fingers crossed, hoping we were going to have that Thursday off. And I walked by the window, and she's like, oh, do I come and see the kids working on it? And literally, you see the kids on the floor there. They're doing programming with their Chromebooks programming. That was the cereal, right? Another group of kids doing, you know, online coding, just learning how to do it, some keyboarding. So a lot of activity was happening all at once, harnessing some of that excitement from the snow day, but the kids weren't into it, you know what I mean? So not all kids are doing the same thing at the same time, but it was fun to see.
All students, is this, 100% everybody gets exposed to this, or?
Right now, kindergarten through third grade, I see every class every other week, every cycle. Fourth and fifth grade, I don't see their classes as a whole very regularly. I do hold the kids in small groups. But like I said, we're going to look at the master schedule and see if there's a way to better fit in fourth and fifth, because we've talked a lot about meeting those sort of digital citizenship and tech fluency skills, just like always.
How many are recent at this age?
Very far. I think I'm a very nice break from a lot of things. It's super hand bond. It's very freedom.
They're engaged.
They are. Yeah. They really, they really do enjoy it. And because this is my first year in the program, I stay, try to stay about a step ahead of them, but sometimes that's not always been helpful. So a lot of it is of sitting down together and saying like, okay, why isn't this working? And how can we work through it? And so they're getting those problem-solving opportunities too, and I'm really enjoying it.
And as far as the scheduling question, we did change the master schedule this year. And one of the reasons for that, Mike, honestly, was that loss of learning time. I mean, they had to make some adjustments. And I would echo what Ashley says as far as, and I am glad that we don't just stop, we look at it as theme. Sometimes those skills that students learn in those types of classes, whether it's arts, technology. Absolutely, absolutely. Because some of the other, like the math, science, you know, even ELA classes, it's a little bit easier to give them, you know, a number, you know, as far as, okay, do they have this skill set or not? Some of the other ones is a little bit harder to attain that, or some requests the kids like the most, you know what I mean, his hands on and engaging. So it is something that we are looking at as far as for next year's schedule, how it'll fit in. Thank you, Ashley. Any other questions about the elementary component of it?
Great. Thank you. I'm having a good time.
Learning a lot, that's for sure. So before I hand it over to Sean, the basic idea, and definitely anyone hop in if they want to provide clarification as far as, you know, what offerings the students have right now. But in sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, currently they have art for 10 weeks with Mr. Antonucci, and then career and technology with Mr. Sporleader for 20 weeks. In seventh grade, every student, so we do want to expose every student to these classes, has technology stuff in with Mr. Loughlin, and then in eighth grade, they go back to 20 weeks of art with Mr. Antonucci and 20 weeks of career in that with Mr. Sporleader. So I'll pass the flicker over to Sean. Thank you.
Hello, guys. None of you know me personally. I'm Sean Sporleader. I'm the new tech teacher that came here. I like to say to some people when they ask me, this is my first year full-time here, because actually I did my student teaching here in the spring. So I actually already had a deal for the district, and it really helped when I got here. I already know some people. Nice to have them.
Heard a lot of good things.
Well, I appreciate it. So sixth grade, career in technology. This is something that was completely new, completely new to me, completely new to this district. So when I came here, we had some guidelines, some ideas, and this is currently what we're looking to cover and have covered so far as the semester and year has gone by. So obviously, number one, and you're going to see this again for the eighth grade slide, is safety. By the time they get to sixth grade, we're going to get more hands-on components. Now, we're not going full bore with the woodshop or anything like that, but we're going to do things like foam cutting, hot glue gun, basic hands tools, things like that. Safety is my always, my first priority. Second thing is measurement, and I don't know if Ashley touched on that. If she does any measurement in depth at sixth grade, I give them their first real experience with this tape measure, this ruler. And then obviously, in science class, most of the scientific world is under the metric system. Well, I introduced them to the English system of fractions, using rulers, tape measures, things like that. And it's always something that's going to get revised all through their school career. And the other nice thing that I like to do is the problem-solving process, which we certainly get a lot of experience with down in elementary. But believe it or not, there actually is a process that is published to actually solving the problem. You look at your resources, look at what do you need to accomplish, how you need to accomplish it, and set a goal. And then if it doesn't work, we group and we try again. And I really stress that with, when we do activities all throughout here, as far as problem solving. Fundamentals of technology, there's actually two things, and I pulled some of this out of old MST standards for technology education, and some of it comes from different avenues. But we look at two things. First off, what is technology versus what isn't? And the word technology, a lot of people, we need to think, oh, computer, cell phone, laptop, slides. Honestly, to tell you the truth, technology is anything that is human-made or interactive with the human intellect. Example that I love to share is the tree way out on the hedgerow. We're going to assume that Mother Nature put that there probably many years ago. That is not technology. That is nature. But the day I go out there with a chainsaw, cut it down, and mill it up on the boards, then it becomes technology, because I processed it in some way to meet their needs. So this table, the carpet, the concrete, everything you see in this room, for the most part, unless it's a plant or yourself, is technology. We're sorry to throw in the joke there to the students. Unless you're a robot, yeah, totally, you're not technology. So fundamental of the technology, the other thing is the evolution of technological principles of technology. Where did we came from, going all the way back to the days of stone tools and primitive things such as spears, all the way up to where we are now, digital era. We do do a bit more basic programming. We step up Ashley's stuff just a little bit. And this is an evolving thing. I'm always finding new things, new sites, new things to offer. But right now, we're doing some units on code.org, which is a free site we have access to. And it's very interactive for the students, but it also presents the information in a way that they would like to see. And a lot of it is interactive computer games, basically, and I'm sure you are aware. Most of our students love to play games on the computer, video games. It presents it in that light, but it makes them interact with it in a way that, ultimately, they're learning that, okay, well, this is block coding. This is work with my commands. I make this work because I actually tell it to. And then the computer applications, again, they get a lot of it with Ashley, but for me, we're going to step it up. How do I take a video? How do I make a word document, things of that nature? We're not digging all the way in. We're just kind of scratching the surface as we go right now. Simple machines is another cool one, and simple machines actually is things like pulleys, wedges, rippers. How can I gain mechanical advantage if I take a large rock and a board to try to move something heavy? Principles like that. Those are actually called simple machines. And then basic visual communication slash drawing. Visual communication would be things like word drawings, hand drawings, really anything that you're trying to communicate detail through drawings. And we have a cloud-based software called SketchUp that I use in the middle school. It's basically a watered-down DCC version of the program. It's quite a little auto CAD, which we get into in high school. But SketchUp is very nice to work with in middle school. The big advantage is they have access to it on their Chromebooks, which they have with them. So, and then I'll talk about seventh grade technology just for a second, because Jason couldn't be here tonight. Seventh grade technology, they're meeting every day now, Jason Loughlin. So it's really nice for them that they have that continual exposure, and they're not taking a day off, then coming back, trying to get their projects out again. And so far, been talking with them, it's been really great. And they've already gotten a lot more done than they have in the past, just because of being in that regular routine. So again, they're going to cover a lot of the same things that I would cover, along with some new concepts. So seventh grade is really when they're going to start getting into more hands-on things, such as machinery, the woodshop, things of that nature, materials processing. They're going to talk about principles of invention versus innovation, sorry, history of technology, applying measurement. They'll get into a lot more things, or here's a board, we need to cut it, we're going to process it, go through all these commands. And this is why we need to know measurement, because if your measurement doesn't come out right, your birdhouse is probably not going to look right as we have. And then things like quality control, material management. And again, see if there's safety. Jason also pushes safety very hard, just like me. So after the kids get through seventh grade, they're back to me for eighth grade. And eighth grade career in technology, I'm kind of blending a little bit of the principles that we took away from Holden Careers, and that's why we have the name Career Technology. So again, with regular technology principles, they were always getting in eighth grade. We're incorporating things like career exploration. So I have different activities the students are doing to try to find pretty much any career out there, research it. What are the benefits? What actually does it entail? And then at the end, they say, do you have any interest in this whatsoever? Some of them say, yeah. Of course, some of them say, no, I just did it just to do a project. Okay, well, you know, that maybe you're not interested in that in the future. And along with the career exploration, I have different activities where they're actually learning some basic financial skills, ideas such as making money, spending money, saving money, keeping track of money. And I have some more activity planned. We can get more towards the end of the year. Right now, we're just kind of going through, figuring out what's working and what isn't with this new curriculum. And then the rest of it, basically, is topics that we traditionally always covered, materials processing, woodworking, making all sorts of different projects. Structures, again, you can see up there a picture on one of the first days of school. I know it's hard to see. I gave them a problem-solving challenge, where I gave them four pieces of paper. And the topic was, build a tower as tall as you can in just four pieces of paper. And some of them really were able to make the connection, and they did pretty well. And last one I'm going to add into eighth grade is concepts of agriculture. We're basically looking to discover some very key concepts, going back to, I know this is a very plain way to put it, where does our food come from, what goes into making it, and basic things such as soil nutrients. Why can we put a seed in the ground? What actually makes it grow? And why is that very important for our society? That's the key concepts I'm looking to cover towards the end of the year, spring would be great. So after eighth grade, students have many different options, once they move into the high school, into whether they'd like to pursue more art classes, they'd like to pursue more technology classes. We actually have lots of students that pursue both, fits into their study book. So current art and technology offering, I can't talk too much about the art ones, because that's the art department. You're going to hear about those in Rob's video in a few minutes. Design drawing for production, currently Jason is teaching there. And that is basically 20 weeks of traditional word drawing and drafting, learning the very basics of isometric drawing, sweep, orthographic, line weights, shading, all those principles of what, you know, traditionally goes into drafting. The second 20 weeks of the course, when they move on to Autodesk Inventor, which is basically an AutoCAD program on the computer. And it's incorporating all the same things that they did on the board, except now they're learning how to do it digitally, which, as I'm sure you know, that's becoming much more of the prominent thing in the world, is everything's being done digitally for architectural purposes and everything else. After the students go through DDP, a lot of them choose to go to art classes currently, but we also have some pick around the next year, and they come back for CAD class, which I am now teaching. And that is basically a more in-depth version of DDP, using only the computer and only the Inventor software. And that is currently 20 weeks every day. I taught it for the early year semester, the fall semester, and it went really well. And we actually had some students come up with some really great projects that actually kind of stuck me there. You know, we had students come through, and they made some really nice work, and I actually have a screenshot, one you'll see in a moment. Advanced CAD, the students that go through the regular CAD class, can choose to come to advanced CAD for the second 20 weeks. And what we're doing in advanced CAD is we're doing a lot more projects that start all the way down with the basics. Here's your materials, here's your problem, how we're going to solve it, all the way up through designing, drawing it, prototyping, up to making the final product and testing it. And I have several projects planned. Currently, what we're doing is we're designing boats, that usually are cardboard, but being a little nicer to them, they're giving them plastic sheets. And those are actually going to be taken to GCC in a month for, that's called Tech Wars. And they're actually going to race those boats in a regatta in the pool at GCC. So all the students pretty hooked up for that. They're working pretty hard making the boat designs perfectly. CAD III, there's actually a name change for CAD III that you'll see in a moment, and that's taught by Jason, who's always taught that. And the content is not going to change too much, but that is an extremely in-depth version of what I'm making in advanced CAD, where we start from the ground up, and we build products, design them all the way through. Again, the art classes, Rob is going to touch those in this video, so I can't tell you too much about Eric's class, click and try, but I hate to give the wrong information.
Well, and I realize that's a really busy slide. There's tons of options on there, and I just wanted to point out, that's one of the challenges also when they're building the master schedule in the counseling department, and Mr. Salatella are working on those. We have a lot of one Z, two Z kind of classes that, when students are making those choices, they have to make choices sometimes. So in a little bit, we're going to be talking about some potential new classes for next year. We've talked about, in some ways, some of the only ways to fit that is if we have a couple of classes happening at the same time. If we only have two or three kids taking one class, to keep it running, we may have to have two of them, you know, offered at the same time, you know, which is a challenge for the teachers. But that kind of speaks to some of those challenges of that master schedule, because we have a lot of kids that are wanting to take all those classes, which is a good thing. It's a good problem to have, but it does present some challenges as well.
Ten, I'm sorry. I want to kind of understand what you just said. Do we have, are we meeting everybody's needs who wants to take these classes?
To an extent, Mike, I would say. I think we do get to that spot where, okay, a student wants to take four different AP classes, let's say. And there's certain ones that are going to be required where they have to take them. When it comes down to it, we do the best we can to, you know, appease all of those needs.
So it's scheduling, I don't mean justice. So it's scheduling conflicts as opposed to resources.
I would say scheduling is the biggest challenge in that master schedule, having so many, you know, one Z, two Z kind of classes. We do have some students taking them online too. It's talked about accelerating as an option. Not necessarily the same, but it does, it does fit some of those needs as well.
See, the big challenge, Mike, is like, all these are singleton courses. And then if you deal with 11 AP forces that are also singleton, and then you do some of the other electives and some of the other departments, which are singleton, with only eight periods in a day, there's bound to be conflict. It makes it very difficult. I think we've expanded a lot with the new middle school program, so that generates more interest. And I think you're seeing a little change in society, where they push at one point with all AP. I think we've all lived that.
Absolutely.
And now you're starting to see.
Come back.
High school skill can be very valuable, and extremely valuable. I think we've got to make that adjusted too, with students and families, educate them on that. There's nothing wrong with AP. We shouldn't have students drive to get as many APs as possible, but there's some benefit to other programs.
Thank you.
But just real quick, this was a drawing that was produced in Inventor, the computer software reused for drafting. And this is actually a final project from one of my students back at the 20-week mark. So I took a nice screenshot of it. I wanted to show you. This was one of, one that came up really well, that I really wanted to highlight.
Okay, I'm going to start up the video that Mr. Antonucci put together that highlights our, some of our new art programs as well.
Everyone, this is Rob Antonucci. I am middle school, high school art teacher. And I'm going to take a minute to go over some of the things that are new and things that we are using that utilize technology in our classroom this year. We got some new equipment that I'm actually going to go through and highlight for you now. First thing I'll mention is that I have two different classrooms that I use these things in. The one on the bottom here is my regular art room, room 84 in the back corner of the school. I use some of the things there. And then on the right, this is the old high school computer lab that we have converted into the Mac lab. So I used to have a smartboard, and that was a smartboard that came along with a projector. And the projector bit the dust, and we upgraded to this. And we now have this really nice, it's almost like an interactive monitor with a touchscreen, works really well. Hopefully, this video will play for you. Yep. So you can kind of see the, how it works here. It works like a smartboard, where you can take a pen, and you can select and draw right over top of it, and then draw right on the board like this. It works really well. There. So you get the idea of how that works. Next one I have is my Elmo, which is really handy. I do a lot of my teaching demos. I'll draw in the front of the room here with the Elmo, and then the students can follow along on screen. Long gone are the days of all the kids gathering around, plus that's not great in times of COVID. So the students just sit in their normal seats, and they look up at the screen, and they can see me drawing, or I can pre-record it and play a recording and talk over top of it. Chromebooks have been really handy for students to look up images to draw from. We got a cart of iPads, and Procreate is the program that we use on them. Here's a photo of a student demonstrating my own personal one, because he was really into it and wanted to buy one. But we have a whole cart of the iPads that you can draw on coming soon. Here's just a quick example of some of the artwork you can do using the iPad. Another thing that I got recently were these light boards, and it helps students with tracing and honing their skills. Here's a photo of our older computers. We've had these for about 10 years, give or take. And recently, we've upgraded with these brand-new iMacs. They work great. They load lightning fast. The students love them. They, so far, I've gotten a lot of compliments, and they're working great. Next year, we're going to have four new half-year art and tech courses, where we utilize all of our computers and all of the software that we have. And the reason we made them half-year courses is so they're easier to schedule. You can schedule opposite health. And we found that the attendance is, or the enrollment has been much better now that we've made them half-year courses. So I'll go through what those are as of now. So photo, we've been doing for the last couple of years. It was a full-year course, and we decided to divide it into photo and video, which I'll also go over in a minute. So in our photo class, we also got this year Canon Rebel T100 DSLR cameras. So each student gets to sign one of these out at the beginning of the year to use and take some fantastic photos throughout the year. I'll show you one in a minute. Software we use is mainly Photoshop, but we also use Lightroom a little bit too for photo editing. Here's an example of one of the photos. Meredith Bailey took this one with the DSLR. Beautiful, really sharp, really crisp. They take great photos. Here's one that was taken by Eric Cole. This was for an assignment for collections, and this was one of his collections that he has for fishing and fishing lures. It's a great project. Came out really nice. We do a lot of Photoshop, where we combine different photos into one. So here's an example. Here's a photo by Zoe Niderbach, and here's Poppy Thomas. And Poppy is holding color pictures of herself when she is in black and white in a filter. So those are combined to make a new image. Here's another one we used. We took part of the image and flipped it upside down. This is Main Street Geneseo, taken by Reese Kleinhand. Beautiful photo. Our video course is the second half of the year that just started. We've sort of done video before in the past, and we've used iMovie editing software. If anyone's ever used it before, it works fantastic. In my opinion, it's the best and the easiest to use on the market. Great for anywhere from elementary all the way up to high school and beyond. Here's a little video clip of something we've done so far in our video class. This is done by Xander Keely, and we started off with doing backwards videos. So students had to shoot videos of different actions taking place, and then they had to reverse it. And that just helps the students learn how to use the program, but they're kind of fun to watch. It takes a regular mundane activity like folding clothes or unfolding clothes, and makes it that much more interesting. So just one of the things we started off with this year. Graphic design, we've been running for a quarter. Uh, graphic design, we've been running for quite a while. The course has sort of changed over time. And the main focus now is going to be um, computer graphics, advertising. We mainly use Adobe Illustrator. That's the program that we'll use in, in class there. And we create these big, bold, bright illustrations in that class. And we do things with different textures and character. The new things we implemented this year is something called Adobe Dimension. And what this is, is 3D modeling. So what students would do is use Illustrator to create a logo for a product. They would do that separately in sort of a flat way like this. Then they import it into Adobe Dimension and it takes that and it wraps it around an actual product where you can go in, adjust the lighting and everything from there. Very cutting edge. This is very um, top of the line right here. Can't wait for students to do this. This is just an example I made. We haven't quite gotten there in the course yet. They will soon. A new course that we're going to be offering in the next school year is uh, one that I proposed, it's going to be called Digital Art. And what it's going to focus on is creating art similar to this. This is created by Zach McGavro. And we're going to focus on art that you would make in the regular classroom. Something that's just kind of art for art's sake, only created in a digital way. We've also been doing art, uh, um, computer art in the middle school and utilizing some of our technology. In the sixth grade, this was made by Celia Rose. This is pixel art. The students had a lot of fun taking their fair, favorite characters and breaking them down into individual bricks. It's actually more challenging than you think to take something complicated and make it simpler. Uh, this was created by a student. He was so excited about this, went around and showed everybody. Uh, this is just kind of a basic Photoshop project where um, he took this sculpture and he put the head of Josh Allen and some other characters over top. He was so excited, went around and showed all of his teachers. He loved it. In our eighth grade right now, what we're doing is we're creating famous portraits, but from where you're looking right now, I'm sure they just look like normal lines. But once you zoom in a little bit, you can see what this is actually made from. You can see right here, it says Billy Madison. It says the water boy. So this is a portrait of Adam Sandler done entirely in text. And this one was created by a student named Robbie Flowers. So Robbie made this one. I'll go back through and show them to you again. So all these are created entirely with type and letters. Very, very cool project. So uh, I hope you enjoyed seeing what we've been doing so far with our new technology. I'm very excited about it. And I hope you are too. I really see our school making strides in technology, especially in the field of art. Thank you, everybody.
It was so random, the studentsy tech to put in for a sample. I don't know where that came from. So obviously we can't ask Rob questions about that, but he uh, just wanted to kind of show, show off some of the different products that we're working on and, and the direction we're moving into.
Everyone, uh, this is Rob.
So before we end up, this was from their uh, field trip yesterday, the uh, of middle school, high school art, or no, it was for the high school art students. They ended up going to see the Van Gogh exhibit and they said it was fantastic. They wanted me to include that in here. And, and lastly, just some classes that we're talking about for next school year. Digital art is like, well, I was saying, it's basically just reflecting what that next media class is because that's where we're at. We're, we're, we're doing more digital art. But um, Sean had mentioned the product, design and development. That's just the title of our chat today. And I'll let Sean wrap up to talk about uh, what construction systems and intro to ag are going to look like at the high school level.
So for those two classes, as we just talked about before, we have the student interest. Right now mainly what our goal is, is figuring out how can we schedule this and how can we offer these? We can get the most students to have the interest into these classes. And that's currently what we've been looking at. We've been talking to John and Mike for the past couple of weeks. But construction systems is going to be a new course and we're looking for it to be around the timeframe for twenty weeks. Whether that's going to be every other day all year, every day for twenty weeks. We're going to figure that out as the scheduling goes on and how we need to schedule that. But construction systems mainly, what that's going to teach our students is the key fundamentals that go into building a simple structure. And we're not going to talk too much about, you know, very industrial structures such as a school building or Walmart. But more things such as residential. So if they ever wanted to build a shed or a doghouse or even put an addition onto their house, it's probably not going to give them every single skill they would need to go out and tackle building a large structure by themselves. If they are extremely interested in that, I'm sure they might pursue going to BOSI's for building trades. But it's going to give them the key fundamentals to understand how those structures are going to work. As well as how to make some basic repairs in the future. Maybe they're a homeowner and they need to repair the plumbing on the kitchen sink or they need to fix the shingle on the roof. Doing something like building a model roof in the classroom and actually shingling it, testing it to see if it leaks. Or soldering some copper pipes together on the workbench and then testing it to see if it leaks. Those are all different activities and we have a very wide range of things we can do with that. And certainly it will not be a problem to fill twenty weeks, even if we did it forty weeks, so it doesn't on the radar. There's plenty of activities and plenty of student interest for that. Introduction to agriculture is probably something that a lot of you are kind of wondering, what is that one? So if you didn't know, I actually have a bit of a background in agriculture as well as teaching. I was very young. I grew up on a farm for a little bit and then we sold it and moved here. And I'm slowly getting back into doing that myself and aside from teaching. I grow some sweet corns and pumpkins, help suffer loving people on the side. Actually have my own little farm. But agriculture is something that I feel that every school should have some type of course offering, even if it's incorporated into a different one. Because really, it's kind of the basis of our society. Everybody needs to eat, everybody needs nutrients from somewhere. Where are those going to come from? What are the processes that it takes to get from seeds and soil all the way to the grocery store to your table? As well as in agriculture, I also have some curriculum that we can put in there. There's a very large offering from companies like Bricks and Stratton to do things with small engines and mechanical repair. And that's something that you could either do in its own course, or you could incorporate it into a different one. And agriculture and other school districts is a very popular place to put that. So ideally what we're looking with that one is to start off first half of the course, doing work with mechanics, small engines, electrical. And then moving on things as the weather gets nicer, hopefully we can offer this more towards the springtime. As the future goes on, we might try to do something like go out and find a little patch somewhere on the property. We could grow some pumpkins and students could do the soil testing. We could do the preparation. They could come in and they could see how they're growing. And then in the fall, they could come in, they could pick their own pumpkin, take it home, give it away. Lots of different opportunities, but it's certainly something that I know we have plenty of students interested in for all different reasons. And it would certainly be great if we could offer that. And I know that we're looking into all different avenues to be able to do that.
And so the last one, they're just, uh,
Yeah.
Um, construction systems and others, are they open to everybody or are there prerequisites?
As of right now, they would be open to any high school student. So we're not literally looking for any prerequisites at this time. It's, future goes on and as we offer them, we might come up with something different that would then require a prerequisite. But as of right now, they're open to every student, you know, nine through twelve.
And not having the prerequisites gives us more flexibility with how to do it. Just the more prerequisites put in there, the more singleton that creates and it's very much into the master schedule.
Yeah, that certainly, it certainly depends on the curriculum that you're teaching.
Mm-hmm.
I realized that was uh, a lot of information. You know, it was a long presentation, but when we're talking about what we're doing to team K-12. I'm really excited where we're at right now. Ashley, looking at where we are with the elementary program and, and working with different teachers down there and then growing it through that middle school and high school. And working with Sean, I'm, I'm articulating what that vision is going to look like. I think we're in a good spot, but um, I know it was lengthy, but does anyone have any questions from any part of the elementary component all the way up to the middle high school that we did not cover? Sure.
I, I'd like to thank uh, all of you for coming. Very informative. Uh, appreciate it very much. Um, Ashley, I was wondering if uh, you might allow a baby boomer who learned on a manual typewriter to audit some of those uh, elementary courses?
I have two manual typewriters in my room and they are the most popular. Um, things when we do keyboarding and typing, one kid at a time gets to come up and like slink out their name. And if you know where to buy ribbons for that typewriter that we really hopefully need because.
I'll, I'll work on that.
I'm going to need that replaced. That's true.
Great, thank you.
I was sorry.
Thank you.
You got a manual typewriter and a flip.
Yeah.
Any uh,
We'll, we'll do the whole range.
Time me up. Kevin, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Sean back earlier in the eighth grade, you were running through the concepts that agriculture. How is that going to interface into the introduction back to agriculture when you're saying that you may have a mechanical component? Whereas in it, and whereas in the concept that agriculture is mentioned, so the nutrients, so.
So there's, there's going to be some crossover of the, the very basic skills. When we get into the introduction in the high school level, that's obviously going to be a much more hands-on uh, approach to it and in more in depth. So ideally my perfect class size, just in my head right now, would be somewhere around fifteen students. That's normally the size of our high school courses right now. And if I had fifteen students who are very interested in learning more about soil sciences and all those topics, we would definitely be going out and be pulling our own core samples. We might work with neighboring farms in the area, go test the field somewhere. And those are all different things that I've done even as a student when I was in high school. When we get down to the eighth grade curriculum, obviously there's a lot more students, a lot less time. So we're going to touch the key concepts, but probably it's going to be more of a in and out kind of approach to it. And maybe that's a bad way to put it. But basically here's some soil, here's what we're going to look at, here's going to be our response. For the high school, it's going to be a lot more, this is what you're going to do.
Well, honestly, I think a lot of times those exploratory courses they get in, in middle school, it's to gauge interest. You know, it, it, it's to kind of put those pieces out there. It's not going to be for everyone. But some people might, they take that unit and say, oh, there's something that I love. They absolutely engaged in it, something I want to pursue. So that, that's the value of having all those options in the middle school level, those exploratory classes. It, it really will light the fire for some students, I think.
And it's advantageous for us. We're one of the few schools that made that conference. Very thankful to have Sean on board because he enabled us to be able to offer the CTE. So we used to have to, there's certain units of studies that students have to get to middle school. And when we went away from homing careers into the CTE model, you know, he embedded finances in there, he embedded careers in there. So our students actually get more technology in the CTE program than the students in middle school give. So it, it's really been beneficial to us. And I believe it's going to be like a marketing tool. When he came to me with these ideas about our agriculture, I think one of the biggest strengths of any organization is when you have talented people that have strong knowledge or background in that office. Why wouldn't we offer that to students to, to answer them as well? We're excited with the future and I, I think it'll just continue to grow.
So I agree with you, with your idea of, you know, introducing it. It's a great idea to sort of get the interest of the kids. Uh, thank you all very much. It was great. Sounds like the middle school, high school, we're getting to where you want to be. Correct? Ashley, Seth, Kelly, is there anything that you would like to see K-5?
I think scheduling is our biggest um, hurdle, like, like you heard.
Besides, yeah, time's always going to be there.
Sure. Um, but the other, my biggest hurdle then would be space, but I know that new space is coming. So I have a lot of plans for the current time that are going to be different than my plans for the future. And I have the new space near, firstly, I like that Sean brought up agriculture because I've been talking to fifth grade about gardening and doing some sort of sustainability projects. Um, and so we'll have hopefully some outdoor space there, some more room to move, to race the robots, to be able to use the coding and the um, computer programming that they're learning and apply it. I just don't have the, the, the room right now and the resources. So a lot of the plans that I have, um, when I, you know, talked to John and Kelly about taking this position was um, like here's what I think I can do in the first one, three years and then moving forward.
You know, I've mentioned to John in the past too, and it's my big work, I'm just another, but um, you know, trying to implement the ESE standards as much as possible into the other classes. That there's so much, you know, going on in these classes, you know, as much as possible to try to get that, you know, global collaborative or um, you know, knowledge construction. All those standards that, that really is technology focused on assignments that can be embedded into those curriculum. I think that's huge. But when you can have that uh, you know, other curriculum working together. I mean, even uh, one of the science teachers was talking about that agriculture class and, oh, I can't wait till we start that. It's like that soil sample component is something I want to build into living environment right now. You know what I mean? So I think some of those pieces will start organically happening. First, like especially, I mean, these are both two new people in their programs. You know what I mean? It's like Asher's not new into the school at all, but learning as we go and, and already have um, relationships with, with the other staff here to start looking for, okay, how can we weave this in? So I, I think we're in a good spot for that right now.
And that's something I did last summer too. I met with every grade level to talk about what their science standards were, what their technology standards were, what the units were that they did teach and what they wanted to teach and where I could extend what they could do in the classroom. Because I know um, from classroom teaching that your time gets stretched. So where I could, um, you know, second grade does simple machines and fourth grade does force and force and motion. And so when I can tiki back on those and really extend it in my room, I can get people both ways. Great.
Good questions though. Thank you very much.
You know, let me just, uh,
Sure.
Sitting on this board for nine years now, this is the first time. And I want to commend you all. Everyone who has presented this, it's the first time I've seen the kind of detail that I like to see. In terms of the programs and the plans and the, and the thought process at all of us. Um, you, you've done a tremendous job that I really appreciate in, in terms of getting us really started in student. And more importantly, not just thanks for me, but I think the students are going to be really thankful because that's what it's all about. And what you're doing for them is preparing them for creativity. So thank you.
Thank you very, very much for the comments and for the support. We do appreciate it.
Well, you can see we have two very engaged, passionate teachers.
Oh, yes.
When they're in front of kids, it's just, everyone's having fun because they're having fun, the teachers are having fun. So they are doing a great job and we all know that it's up here. So they've done a great job. And then the administration is supporting the native classes along with offering. So everyone over there is not from the other part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. Spoiler, there are a couple of um, people on the board that you may want to take their field trip as teams engage in that farming agricultural.
Oh, I'm well aware.
And you don't have to say, they're absolutely out of, it's late. Uh, but they did your presentation. It sounds like it's so boring right now there. So drag safe.
Thanks again, everyone. Um,
So as you know, looking at the capital improvement project, talking about next steps. We know that costs have escalated and we will not be able to afford that, everything that we have wanted to have included in that fifteen point five million dollar project. We know our priorities and what is critically generated, that's what we need to identify. We really need to identify what we can offer in our team, um, for our team constituents, in our fine arts and in our athletics. So what are we doing? We know, as I said last time, we had the Tina with two point nine million dollars over. Hilton was over, CFC, um, Airport CFC was over. Um, you know, talk to another super center today. They were saying they were extremely nervous, were nervous, they thought it helped because everyone is experiencing it. We had our capital outlay um, bid today. And you know, we'll bring that, that recommendation to you at the next meeting. But we will be able to award a contract. But again, we saw a severe escalation in, in the cost of what it's going to do. And that project is the same thing we did last year. This year's in a different bathroom, but the price has increased significantly. So March second, um, I had up here March second and third, because we really had identified that it was going to be which day it was. We are going to have recommendations from SDI in campus construction. And they're going to present options to repackage the components of that project. That will prepare us as a board to accept or reject the civil site bid. You saw in your packet that we will be, um, there's a resolution to reject the four other bids due to the fact that they are so far over budgeted for them. And then we will also be looking to accepting value engineering items associated with the team and the given additions so that we can repackage and rebid that project as soon as possible so that they, if there's a possibility of needing those deadlines, we can start that construction this summer. And then of course, we always have to talk about COVID, right? So we have one positive case. Um, we have sent our COVID nineteen test kit home with every student. Um, and you know, whoever at home has made the statement that she wanted to test. And you know, Governor Hopel has made the statement that she wanted test kits to go out to families so that they can test before the kids return from spring break or February break. We are asking the children, the families to test the children prior to returning to school. Mask wearing, we know everyone has been struggling with the controversial issue of mask wearing. We continue to wait for the guidance from New York State Department Governor Hopel. And where this can get confusing is that there has been headlines recently where the CDC is saying that they may drop the mask wearing guidelines. A lot of people get confused when the CDC makes that recommendation, why doesn't that automatically happen in two? We have to wait for either New York State Department of Health or Governor Hopel to make that decision. When the mask mandate is lifted, we will allow masks to be optional. We really want to honor personal choice. Some stuff that we have taken to make sure that that was the right choice is that we did reach out to our medical director, Dr. Collins, and he said as long as your positive case number remained low, you continue your other mitigation strategies, continue to offer testing whenever you're ten. And if we will offer anybody, staff members, students, the KN95 mask, then he would agree that that recommendation is absolutely appropriate at this time. And we will continue to offer either testing here or provide pre-home test kits to families when requested. So really hoping that we will hear soon from Governor Hopel that we can move in this direction.
Well, why would the family...
So we haven't really talked about what that means. Because even when our numbers were high, what we still saw when it was was like in families, or unfortunately sometimes we had it within athletic groups or extracurriculars. So if we see a small surge in one area and we can identify what has happened, then we'll obviously test and then have those kids isolated. If we start to see it spread globally, even in small numbers, which I don't have, you know, have those metrics, you know, at this point, you know, then we might have to stop and say, where are we with this? And I know Limousin County Department of Commerce has been a great partner in this. They oftentimes help us with these decisions. At the beginning of the year, we did come up with a matrix of if our numbers were at zero to five, we would not be wearing masks. Five to ten, we, you know, masks are optional, it's strongly recommended. And then if they were over a certain number, so we do have those metrics. We're not sure if we're gonna go back and utilize them or if we need to adjust those.
So you're gonna take a look at additional factors instead of regional factors?
Yes, yes.
All right, so that would be fair to offer.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yes, I do agree. So what we did is we took each of our districts based on our enrollment numbers and created our own matrix.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So some positive news. March 1st, our strategic plan survey will be going out. We will have it on our website. We will also email it to all our families and staff. We will have paper copies available out locations in Genesio. And I'm sure it's got time today calling different areas. SBI provides need paper copies in those areas. So if people were there and had seen it on a website or in some sort of electronic format that they can pick it up. We also chose this timeframe, March 1st through March 25th, because we know parent teacher conferences are taking place in the elementary. And the elementary teacher on the committee said, I know if we have these parents in for parent teacher conferences, we can really help push the response rate of this survey. So we hope to have a very good response to our survey, which will then drive our focus group and that will drive our focus areas and our goals for our just... Unfortunately, we have been notified that we have two sex offenders that have recently moved into the Genesio School District. They're both Level Two. When this happens, Genesio Police Department notifies us, they send us all the information. And if they're a Level Two or above, we are allowed to disseminate the information. So a letter was sent home today to all parents identifying these individuals. They had their pictures, also resources for how to have a conversation with your child about how to be safe and if you're approached, what to do as well. And the sex offender registry list on website is within that notification. So it's unfortunate when this happens, but I can tell you that the Genesio PD is on it immediately, contacts us and we get our information out to our students. Any questions?
The capital outlay project, that's a hundred thousand that we can spend every year, right? Get the building aid, that kind of, that's... So we're gonna do something similar to last year, only the hundred thousand isn't gonna go as far as it went last year. Okay.
If you remember last year, we did the bathroom and the drop-off hoop.
Oh, right, right.
Which, if you utilize the drop-off hoop, there is a lot more room down there to make that turn. It does flow better.
And we didn't need Mr. Tenali over on the pole.
That is correct, we were able to correct that problem.
Questions for superintendent? Okay. Moving along, anybody sign up to speak? So we'll go to the committee on finance, I know they met tonight.
Yeah, we met tonight, it was Chris up, he was saying we're great to have the finance committee back to full strength. Truly coming back, so thanks for joining us. And we meant to talk, we continue to talk through the different categories. Part of the categories, for instance, the budget definition is a special education discussion. And we're just now beginning to put some pieces together, some sentences, where the overall budget will be, will be still very... Those are really the topics.
Questions for the committee?
Thank you for your hard work. Move on to policy we did not need tonight. But there's, I see one item in there for the first grade for a purchasing policy for the district. Another one is required policy.
It is a required policy. It also gives us opportunity to look at different contracts as we are moving forward with our capital projects and to realize any sort of state contract opportunity that allows us to...
I have written a couple of policies sent up, at least one hundred percent. And while we're not too bad, send up.
Okay, if everybody's good with that, we'll move on to GCEF. They've scheduled the meeting for March 3rd. March 3rd. Cindy and I are ex officio members. Very awfully nice group of people that spend money to help kids. They're doing a nice job, so. We may have, or we will have a report after that March 3rd meeting. Okay. Anyone under personnel?
I'd like to entertain a motion under personnel, some items. Item seven point zero two to seven point one two, sorry.
Okay, questions on any of those? Okay. All right. Everybody's good, I'll show what everybody favors the motion, say aye. And anyone opposed? So unanimous?
Does anybody want to say about the two and four?
So eight, yep, so eight point oh two is the board resolution to reject the four or five bids that was really, that included the general construction, our electrical, mechanical, HVAC. So we do need to reject those bids, we'll get re-packaging that capital project, go back out and hopefully receive bids in our budget.
Yes, go ahead.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to from items eight point oh two to eight point zero nine.
Sorry. Additional questions on any of those items? One that Mike just talked about, what we're gonna do is we're gonna reject all the bids except for the potentially the church field.
Correct, it'd be the civil or site contract. We are still waiting to make a final decision on what we'll remove that.
And to try to summarize the resolution, we're directing the architects and engineers and construction folks to come back with another plan that will fit what we wanna do with the amount of money we wanna spend. That's what basically all this means. Any other questions on any of those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
The business office, I'll entertain a motion for items nine point zero one and nine point zero two.
Questions on those? Is anyone good? Okay. All is in favor of that, motion say aye.
All right.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous, thank you. This goes to the pending issue. I sent out an email last night and Mike did some clarifications for me on it this morning, which I appreciate. Hopefully y'all had a chance to read it. What we're looking for is to have a special meeting on March 2nd. If everyone or most everyone can make, at that point, campus and SBI will return with a proposed plan.
Correct.
Okay. That hopefully will be within the amount of money that we have spent. I think that's an essence of what that meeting would be, right?
Correct, yes, really looking at the value engineering recommendation that they can recommend for the project with as far as in our ability to get work.
You know, still include what is not part of that? Like what's coming out, will they include that in some way?
So, I mean, when they talk about, so for example, just recently, an idea that has been talked about is just some exterior finishes. So we'll know because he's saying we're gonna accept this less expensive exterior for, say, the gym edition, we'll know what's not gonna be in there. There are some aesthetics that will be removed from the project. So to the best of our ability, yes, we'll tell you what's in the project and that's what has been...
And those, new rendering as well, theory to look at?
We hope to have new rendering, yes.
So design and financials?
Design and financials, because we need to know that, yes.
If you're looking at March 2nd date, what is your hope to have those to you and the outside?
It's probably, so I have been meeting with them daily, either through Zoom or in person. So we have another meeting tomorrow that we will, we've been starting that process, we'll continue it so as soon as they can have that information.
And, you know, we're not gonna make any decisions on the 3rd. Hopefully we'll make decisions on the 9th, which will give the board a chance to study what you're re-draining. So, you know, we'll get it out as soon as we can, but we won't decide on the 2nd. But hopefully we'll decide on the 9th, that'll give us all time to study. Great, so March 2nd, would that work for folks? Okay. Okay, all right. First step into this, you know, more... Seven o'clock, yeah, seven o'clock. Great, thank you for that. And, gosh. I think that may be it.
I want to entertain a motion to...
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That you now. Thank you, everyone, very much.